Continuing with our budget deliberations, first scheduled up tonight is the police for question and answer. We are still trying to shoot for getting everything done tonight as far as presentations go, but that's not a requirement by any means. And if we have to kick over to the 19th, we will. But we're still going to try to get it done tonight. With that, Chief Moss.
Thank you very much, Governor Ballaschich. Police chief for the city of Renton. I left off last week, I believe you're just about right to say you had no further questions.
Councilmember Person.
Well.
For a counterpoint, let's go to councilperson.
Unfortunately, I think I left the answers on my desk. Maybe, oh, Julia watches, so I'm sure she'll look on my desk and bring them out. I thought I had them. As you'll notice, when I do this budget stuff, I go through stuff. There we go. I just want to let the council know that I did send the chief an email asking some questions, so that that's why you have his answers on this memo that you got.
Is that the November 3rd memo?
This is a November 3rd follow-up to committee of the whole budget workshop.
Thank you.
And the questions that I asked, if I can, I have them here, so I can't forget that I asked them. How are we doing with the paperless reporting system for police reports? This is a system that was started a long time ago where the officers can do their reports in the field out of their patrol cars. Why I asked that question, obviously, we've got a lot of money into the system, but the old system used to be, the officer went out in the field, took handwritten notes, then came back and had to, well, when I started, you used a typewriter. And then we progressed where they could put it into a voice recording machine, and then onto, you could type it into a computer. And so now, they can do that from the car and download it, and that the acts, then it goes right into the computer system, so the records clerk, I mean, this is all in theory, and it was, and so I just want to know how that system was working, because there's quite a bit of money invested in that. And we did get an answer, so if everybody's satisfied with the answer, I'm satisfied with the answer. And then, the other ones were talking about the SROs coming out of the schools, that the SROs had made several recommendations over the years, what would make their job easier and more effective in the schools. And they've given us a list of those recommendations. And then, the other one I asked was just the number of sergeants and commanders in the police department. And I have, we have that. And the number, charted the number of case report numbers over the last 10 years, number of officers, and number of Valleycom dispatches, and you all have that. So, my questions have been answered.
Any other questions from council? No further questions, Chief?
Thank you.
Next up, fire and emergency services. Chief Peterson, I believe.
Mark Peterson, fire chief, emergency services administrator, here tonight. Been on deck here now for three weeks, and I'm finally here. So, as you can see, our department org chart there, we're broke down into four different areas, and I'll talk about that in a little bit here. So, go ahead and move forward. Our mission is basically, is tied into the city business plan, is to maintain a safe and livable city. And then that's through the reduction of risk, the efficient and effective response to escalating emergencies, and a culture of safety and support for our members. So, it ties in each one of our different businesses into the mission. Our core services are response ops, which are obvious, is our EMS and fire response, and whatever else, you know, we get dispatched to. We tend to go to a lot of different types of emergencies, alarms, service calls, you name it. The other function we have is the emergency management. And as you folks will know, later on tonight, we have the comprehensive emergency management plan. And emergency management's done a fantastic job of tying all the city departments together. So, in event of a disaster, some sort of an event, all city departments work together to achieve the goals of reducing the impacts of the emergency on the community. We also have our community risk reduction section, pretty much does all our fire investigation and fire inspections. Right now, we're down two inspectors, so we really had to sit down and prioritize what our inspections were. We first spent our inspections on permitted occupancies, and then as we were looking at some of our higher life safety occupancies, we decided to switch some of our priorities to there. And the reason we did that is some of our permitted occupancies haven't had infractions in the last couple of years, so we want to concentrate on the ones that provide the most bang for the dollar. And then we have our safety and support services. In order for us to do anything, we have to have a training division, we have to have a logistics division to be able to give the tools and equipment, and the skills necessary to complete the job. So, that's our core services. So, we're, we sit under the safety and health section of the Renton results, but an argument can be made that we are, can be in part of the livable community, mobility, utilities and environment, because we really impact a lot of those areas. As you can see, we have 156 employees that are budgeted for in 2013. However, right now, we're six positions down. So, we're at 155 as we speak. And a lot of that is, we got a grant a year or so ago from the federal government that funded nine positions, fully funded the nine positions. That grant goes away in May of 2013. So, instead of waiting until then, through attrition, we are down six positions. However, the impact of those six positions is it takes that aid car off the street up in Station 13's area, and so what that does is it actually impacts the whole system. Station 13's one of our busier stations, so when Engine 13's out on an aid call, and they get a subsequent call, that calls in resources either from downtown, Station 14, or Station 17. So, it's going to impact our response times in those areas. Okay, next. And as you can see, our performance indicators, of course, we want to maintain a class three insurance rating. And that's important for the businesses within the city. For each class down, it's an increase in their insurance rates. And we're not quite sure, it's about 10% per class, from what we understand. We want to get all the plans reviewed in a timely fashion, so we can keep businesses and construction going within a good timeframe, that we're not holding them on. Again, the emergency management side, we want to actually do some exercises, and go out and see if our plans are working, and modify our plans accordingly to do that. Response times are what really dictate whether people live or die. And so, we're really concentrating on making sure we have good response times. And a lot of times, we're looking and analyzing data, we're looking at station orders, we're looking at miles and travel distance, and trying to find the best fit, so that we have the best response times. And then, the last one there is after the arrival of fire, is try to keep it to the building, actually, we'd like to keep it to the room of origin. If it's past the room of origin, by the time we get there, we want to keep it to the building of origin, so that we don't have a major conflagration. Okay? In 2011, these are our statistics, it's taken from our annual report, you can see we had a total of 12,752 incidents. Only 312 of those were fire responses, and that includes car fires, structure fires, grass fires, any sort of fire. And then, the majority of it, about 80%, is emergency medicine. About 9,800 there, almost 9,900 of that. Our average response time is about 5:06. Our fractal response time, which means 90% of the time, will be there within 7:34 or better. It's a little above what our aspirational response time goal is. We've done 2,300 fire inspections, and last year, we did 698 plan reviews. Okay, so as you can see in the five-year average, and I took the five years because this is when we brought and started contracting services with Fire District 40. You can see the numbers have kind of maintained a fairly level, 300 to 400 call difference. In 2010, we responded to 13,000 calls. And then in 2012, at the end of September, we ran, we've already run 10,147 calls. So, projecting that out, we're going to go well over 13,000 calls again this year. And again, the majority of those will be EMS responses. Okay? Inspections, they're kind of all over the map here, but again, it's because we've reprioritized to try to find the higher life safety, and some of those are large apartment complexes that take a lot of time. And the, some of these larger occupancies that take the time can take somewhere upwards to one to two days, just to do the inspection at that complex. You can see we're starting to issue a few more permits, down a little bit in 2011, but we're starting to pick up on those. And then the plans reviewed, again, we're starting to pick up on some plans reviewed for new construction. Okay? So, our current initiatives and goals, again, is timely response. We're constantly evaluating data, we're constantly looking at our deployment models, we're constantly looking at how can we get the best response times with the resources we have. Training is another big thing that we have to maintain. We have a lot of mandates, especially state mandates, through the Washington Administrative Code, that says that we have to maintain so much training. And so, we do a lot of training. The inspectors have a lot of CEUs that they have to pick up to maintain their certifications. We have the EMT certifications for all our firefighters, they have to maintain so many hours every year, not only of the continuing education, but they have to perform these skills, skill levels in manipulative sessions. Maintain our fire insurance rating. Again, we're constantly evaluating, how can we make that better? And what things can we do to improve our insurance rating? And as a part of that, that's develop the strategic plan. Currently, our planning division's going through a self-assessment process, looking at our ways of doing business, how are we matching up with other departments across the country, and then developing our standards of cover and strategic plan. Once we get those two documents, we'll bring them before council for approval. And then, technology and automation. We're constantly looking at how we can be more efficient with the dollars that we have. We've replaced our current records management system program with one that is used throughout the area. So, there's commonality in it, it saves us dollars, especially when we're looking at communicating with Valleycom, we can share those costs with the other area departments. So, that helps in that area. Okay? And then, fees increase, we really had no fee increase in fire plan review or fire permits. However, our fire mitigation fees went up, as in page 738 of your appendix, and the rates and schedule fees, and those were adopted by council, I believe, here not too long ago. Service sustainability, this is our biggest challenge. Fif, our, a third of our department's over 50 years old. 30 members have over 26 years in the service. So, you're going to see a whole big change in the fire department the next few years. We're going to see a lot of retirements, we're going to see a lot of younger members coming in, and we have to, we have to be ready for them. And that goes into our continuous improvement process. With, especially with our younger generation and their expectations, we have to be ready for them. And we have to be able to hand them over in organization that they feel is really one that they are proud to take, take the reins on. And again, we look at regional collaboration. It's really important, especially on these large-scale incidents, that we're working together, we act as one fire department, and it works. In Zone 3, we do a lot of training together. In fact, last couple of weeks, we've been up at the Fire Academy with other departments in the area, practicing live fire, practicing rescue skills, practicing these critical skills that we don't get a lot of just independently. Right? Any questions?
Questions from council? Randy?
Yes.
I got one.
Chief, are we able to, you showed that inspections are dropping off, but you also said you're prioritizing those.
That's right.
And do you feel confident that we're getting to all of the, say, apartment complexes?
No, we're not. A lot of times, what's driving some of our inspections are, our inspectors are fire investigators also. So, they're having to do two jobs at one time, and so that takes, the fire investigation can take quite a bit of time, especially a complex fire investigation, and they spend a lot of time analyzing and report-writing on that. We've tried to get our response ops crews into doing some of the apartments. With call loads and training requirements, it's really difficult to get in there and do them. So, we're really evaluating that area a lot.
Okay. Okay. So, I just say to the council, I think, I mean, I know we've got a lot of priorities, and some of them aren't going to be able to be funded as well as we'd like, but I'd consider that a, certainly a priority. I'd like to see if we can find more money, or as soon as we do. Because one of the things I've kind of noticed, and I'm, you know, a layperson when it comes to recognizing fire danger, but seems to me, I've seen where most of our apartment complexes in town are beautiful, and landlords are aggressively maintaining them, and, you know, sometimes they're getting nicer with age. There are some that seem to turn the other way, and get older, and I start looking at decks, and wondering if they're ready to fall off, and stuff like that, and it would seem like keeping on top of those would be certainly important, so. Okay.
Thanks. Ewan, you need a note to that?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
Yeah, I had a similar question regarding that. And I went back to take a look at whether or not the declining amount of inspections that we're doing had any kind of correlation with increased fire. And we can't see that right now, because it's still flat.
It's real hard to quantify. Even across the country, it's really hard to quantify fire and fire inspection programs. We have, though, however, traditionally seen, when we had a really good, robust fire inspection program, we didn't see the types of dollars in fire loss that we've seen over the years, over the last few years. But it's hard to tie those two together. It just, you know, just to give you an example, the Harrington Square Fire was caused by torched, and we may never have caught that. However, the way we addressed it was that any time anyone does any hot work in the city, they're supposed to get a permit.
Right, right. We did that last year. Here's a question that I have for you, is when you do those apartment inspections, are you all actually getting into all of the units to make sure?
No, we can only get into common areas.
The only common?
So, hallways, we check smoke detectors, sprinkler alarm systems, but we cannot go into the individual units.
How are we covering it? Is that the apartment manager's call to do those randomly, or?
It's real tough, because you've got landlord, tenant laws that dictate when they can and cannot go in the apartment.
And the reason why I'm going down this path is, a few years ago in Seattle, there was a pretty bad fire in a apartment complex that was occupied by immigrants from the Somali community.
Right.
And what we learned later was that they disconnected the smoke alarms, because the culture is to roast their own coffee, which created, you know, a lot of, you know, they didn't want the alarm going off repeatedly. And so, I'm just wanting to make sure we're aware of our population of immigrant refugee populations.
Yeah, actually, we're, we've, yeah, we finished a project here last year with our, trying to identify where the different immigrant populations are, and it is an issue. It's an issue not only in the immigrant, it doesn't matter. We have people disconnecting smoke detectors, because the food on the stove set it off, and they don't like it, and so they disconnect it. And a lot of times, it'll set off the alarm, and we can't reset the alarm until that smoke detector is plugged back in. So, that's when we have to go unit by unit to figure out what's going on.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes they take their batteries out, because they need a battery for a toy or something, too, don't they? I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's in the older apartments. A lot of them now, the newer apartments have both a battery and a electric, so they're hardwired and battery backup.
Mr. Chair? Greg?
The other thing, too, that I found very surprising, was the number of fire calls, it's low, being as low as it is, it works out to about 2.5% of the dispatched incidents or, you know, fire, as opposed to, it looks like 77% are aid responses. So, just as an off-question, is there any kind of future thought in terms of where that could lead fire and emergency services five, 10 years from now?
Well, you've got to make yourself relevant for the community. And what does that mean? It means, like you were saying earlier, educating your public, and sometimes that means educating them in a non-traditional way. For example, some communities don't read the newspaper, or listen to the radio or TV, so we have to find a way to communicate with that community. So, whether it's through their temples, or synagogues, or through their leadership, we just have to find new ways of communicating. The reduction of fires is, you know, is really a tribute to our fire prevention programs nationwide. This is a nationwide trend, this isn't unique to Renton. And so, that's, you know, educating kids at young age, educating adults, having the Fire Prevention Week, and going out and talking about candle safety, or cooking safety, or those kinds of things. And really getting in and talking about that. Also, the alarm systems and the sprinkler systems that we have today are so much more superior than they were 10 years ago, 20 years ago. And so, a lot of that can be attributed to those programs.
Any other councilmembers? Don?
I, some fire departments across the country have gone to, and I'm most likely won't use the right terminology, but like a quick response vehicle, and they respond, not with a big, with a fire truck, but they have.
Yeah, they have a smaller, yeah.
Smaller, so they can handle, they can handle the emergency, or whatever it may be, or a very small fire.
Yeah, they, you can go in and do a real quick knockdown, but you can't go inside the front door. By state law, we have to have at least two people outside before we make entry into a IDLH, or immediately dangerous to life and health, atmosphere. So, you could spray the water through the window, for example, and do a knockdown, but you can't go in until you get more resources on scene to take care of the problem. But that is something that a lot of fire departments are looking at, that's something that we've been toying with, looking at, how can we better deploy our resources with what we have today?
Yes, just following up on his comment, because it does seem, rather than sending out a fire truck and the length of time it may take to get that active, that sending out even in an emergency situation, something smaller first, I don't know, does that, what's the philosophy?
Well, it's, it's, on a confirmed structure fire, you have a lot of tasks that have to be done at the same time. For example, before a hose team can go in and fight the fire, you have to have someone provide ventilation to get the heat and the smoke out. Especially in today's newer construction, we're using more man-made materials. So, we're actually having hotter fires today than we did, you know, back in the 50s and 60s. So, we have to do a lot of tasks simultaneously. You have to have a hose team in place before you can do a search and rescue. They have to have a hose team. And then you have to have a team outside in order to effect a rescue of anybody inside. Again, that's a fed, a federal and a state mandate that we have to comply with. So, there's a lot of things that we have to comply with before we can really do the job that we need to do.
Don?
Just, I'm just thinking of topic for public safety.
I am, too. That's, I could keep going here with him, asking questions, but I think, I think it's something that we can do.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I think that would be, maybe we can remember to refer that issue tonight, and.
Okay.
Sure. Any budget-related questions?
Huh?
Budget-related questions?
Well, we want to talk about what the mandates are. I mean, if you want to go into about a two-hour session on.
Well, no, I mean, that's.
I could.
Right, but we're saving that for public safety.
Right.
Right. So, now, so I'm asking now, do we have any budget-related questions for him?
How much would all that cost?
No, no, not specifically, generally, Don, generally.
Well, fortunately, that's why we have, you know, when we talk about this, that's why we have a lot of regionalization, we have a lot of automatic aid. So, there's times where, especially up in the south end, or even the north end of the city, you'll get a, on a confirmed structure fire response, you'll get resources from outside the city to help us. So, it's, we actually depend on each other quite a bit. We'll go into Kent or Toquilla a lot, because they need those resources, too. So, we really share them real well in doing that.
Another, it's kind of a budget-related. I mean, this tanker fire on Interstate 5, obviously, where they got the foam truck out of Sea-Tac, and my understanding is we had that same kind of arrangement with the Boeing Fire Department?
Yes, yes, it's part of the, we have it with Boeing and Port of Seattle.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Very good.
Human Resources and Risk Management.
What's the next slide? Okay, great. Counsel President, members of the council, my name is Nancy Carlson, and I am the administrator for the Human Resources and Risk Management Department. And I want to thank you all for having us here and letting the department give you its views on the budget. Our budget starts on page 3-85, and we started out with the, we don't have an organizational chart, so to speak. We did more of a functional organization chart. This way, it looks bigger. Because actually, we only have nine people in our department. We're small, but we handle a number of different things. Under Human Resources, we actually have a human resource manager and two analysts, and they deal with all of the recruitment and selection for the organization, classification and compensation, investigations, labor relations, which negotiations, and labor management issues, and then the unemployment. Under our benefits, where we have really 1.5 individuals, we have, of course, a benefit plan, which has to be administered and questions answered. Even though we have a third-party administrator, most of those questions come through our office first, before they go on to the administrator to finally, to answer. We also have a retiree benefit plan, which I believe both councilmember Taylor and Breyer sit on that, and to deal with our retirees. Our wellness program comes under the benefits, and we also have an FMLA program like all other cities do. In risk management, we deal with property liability, we deal with workers' comp, we deal a lot, there's a lot that goes on in the health and safety area, because of the mandates of the number of different classes that our employees are required to take, whether, you know, they're in our maintenance division, whether they're in police, whether they're in fire, we deal with some of those, they mostly do what they're on. But the other segment of the population, we have a number of training requirements. And then we also have ADA compliance. On, I want to talk a little bit about our statistics and the work that we've done over the past couple of years. In the recruitment and selection, which the budget for that is on page 3-86, and that's called the, I'm sorry here, it's actually referred to as the administration division, and that's on 3.88, that's, sorry, that's wrong. In the application area, as you can see, we receive a number of applications, 1,804 in 2011, and 1,503 in 2012. The 144 is our temporary applications that we received, as well as the 800. We filled 61 positions in 2011, and I would say 99% of those were probably turnover. were probably turnover. Twenty-five in so far this year, and the same way, most of ours are turnover. I don't believe, there may have been one new position, a limited-term position approved for 2012, but I don't think there, I think that was probably about it for 2012. But our turnover rate is relatively low, and that's, that's nice. I mean, 5.63 percent is below the average. I think the national average, according to the Bureau of National Affairs and Statistics these days, is running around eight percent for government. So we're pretty low, which is a good thing. As far as risk management is concerned, we had ninety-nine workers' comp cases in 2011 and eighty-eight so far this year. Liability claims, where people are suing us for one reason or the other, are eighty-two in 2011 and only forty-eight to date for 2012. One of the other things that we actively do is that when someone has an accident, you know, on our property or they destroy our property, if the amount is relatively small, we go after them and we want them to pay for the property that we have, they have destroyed. If we're dealing with large sums of money, obviously, we're going to get the attorneys involved. But these monies that you see here are actually recovered by our risk management staff. Gary Lamb, who is our manager, and Colleen Shannon work with people and set up various types of payment plans. Colleen has one person that ran into a police car, actually intentionally, and I believe she's paying something, you know, it's like five or twelve dollars a month. But Colleen makes sure that that check comes in each and every month, and we'll get it paid back. As far as our benefits are concerned, the statistics are on page three eighty-nine. And what we're trying to show here is that, you know, we have a really, we have a very good benefits board, our Benefit Health Trust, which is comprised of three union members, the three presidents of the unions, and Jay Covington. And they work very hard to keep our costs, you know, down. They do that, I think we do that a lot through the education that we, we provide for people, whether it be, you know, working on buying generic drugs or managing, you know, the number of appointments that they have. We do it in a number of ways. But over the past six to seven years, we have been able to keep our increase in costs much lower than the national trend. These are just a couple of years. And now, I know that 2010-11 looks like, well, it's not that, that far below the trend. But actually, this is the percentage of increase in the funding that we gave to the program in 2010-11, an increase in 2011-12. And we didn't need to spend that entire eleven point six percent in 2010-11. So actually, the money went into the reserves for that program. And we ended up, at the end of last year, with over, I think it was seven point four, seven point four million dollars in those reserves. And then, or the end of the year before. And then this last year, we, when we looked at what we were paying, we did a little bit of a closer look to see, we, once again, the actuaries and everyone was telling us, we were going to need to fund our benefit program at an additional thirteen point seven six. And we said, no, we don't go that high. Our trend does not require that we pay that much money so that it can sit there in reserves. So we did some calculations, we worked with the board, we worked with our broker, and we only put in additional six point nine percent. Because of the way that we have been overfunding, we were able this year to negotiate with our unions and to share in the reserve amount of, to share in those reserves and to put them back into the program. And that way, we don't have to put as much money upfront as we would. So that's why our costs for 2012 and 13, you're going to see at only one point two percent. We're using some of those, those reserves to fund our costs as the employer, and we're using some of those reserves to fund the employee's premium that they have to pay into the program so they get a premium holiday. But this is going to be a significant savings for us in the next couple of years. Talking about, you know, by service area, we are, unfortunately, my glasses aren't working that well on those small numbers. We are totally within the internal support area. Now, I know that looks like a lot of money for Human Resources, but the, whether, you know, it's the sixteen, the sixteen million of proposed and the seventeen million, let's forget that we have a, our benefit plan alone is somewhere around twelve million. We have the Retiree Left Program, which is going to be about one point seven million. We have our risk management program, which is above three million. And so all of these monies together are what actually make up the funds that you see here. As far as the budget highlights, we wanted to highlight the reduction in our self-insurance, our self-insured costs for benefits, which I've already mentioned. But some of the other things that you will see on our budget pages here, including, you know, risk, which is on three dash ninety, you're going to see an increase in a couple of areas, and I wanted to explain to you what they are. The first one is the general liability premiums under the risk program, and you're going to see an increase there of twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's just simply the premium that has gone up from WCIA, the authority that we work with. And you're also going to see, under administration, an increase of fifty-two thousand dollars. And that's going to lead me right into the service impacts. I'm probably the only one that's going to come up here and say that the budget highlights for our department actually, actually result in some positive service impacts for us. For example, the reduction in self-insurance, in our self-insured benefits, that really has helped lower our cost, and it's helped to lower the cost for employees. So we consider that, you know, a positive. With respect to the restore the training budget, for the last, since I've been here, which was April of 2008, there really hasn't been a training budget that we can provide our managers and our supervisors with that type of leadership training that they need in order to, you know, work with employees, to inspire employees and to train employees so that we're, as we're working in these smaller, fewer and fewer and fewer employees, that they're actually getting what they need, you know, and we're making a, you know, an informed and a developed population here. The fifty thousand dollars, most of it will be, be spent on, on doing just that. Classes in supervision for our supervisors and managers in leadership, in conflict resolution, in how to better deal with the employees. Some will go to individual development, but that, the amount of that for the various departments has not been decided as of yet.
Terry, did you have a question?
Actually, I think you should just answer it. I was, I was curious in who is the beneficiary of the training? And you made it sound like it's city staff-wide as far as, like you said, leadership and some of those things.
Absolutely. I mean, there are a number of classes that are simply, are, you know, better suited to managers and supervisors, but there are lots of classes out there that are suited to the entire population. And so we will be working with that. One, for example, customer service. Everybody needs good customer service training. And so we need to reiterate with employees, you know, every now and then, what does it mean? What is our philosophy? And get that across to them.
Just one more quick question. The fifty-two thousand, what have we spent in previous years? Is that comparable or is still at a lower?
The, from what I have heard, in the departments themselves, they have spent pretty much nothing unless the employees paid for it themselves. You know, as far, we had fourteen thousand dollars in the HR budget, which we were able to use to get citywide classes. So this is not a huge increase, but it's, you know, it is a start, and we really do need good supervisory training.
Thank you. Don?
Well, I guess, I ran some numbers out of the other services and charges. And I guess my question to you would be, would we, the city be better served to have more of the training under Human Resources or one central entity? Because, for instance, we have travel and, a travel and training budget in everybody's budget, and that comes to two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then we have, but this includes yours, travel, and then also for training in schools, we have another hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So my question is, would some of that money be better reallocated under more of a central training function?
Okay. Could you tell me a little bit more about the training in schools? That's not a fund that I'm familiar with.
Well, it's in-
Yeah, maybe I can add to it a little bit. I'm, Ewan Wong, the Administrative Services Administrator. I know what council member person is referring to. We do have citywide travel and training budget, and some of those are very specific for public safety-related training. If you look at the training budget by department, you can see we do have pretty substantial amount is in police and fire department. And they have specific certification requirement and skill requirement. And we do have other departments have similar certification requirement, like maintenance worker, pesticides, and they are, a lot of those certification has to be, have to be maintained. So most of department, we're keeping the budget for those purposes. And so it's a little bit different type of training. I think what we have, talking about now in HR is more general skill rather than specific vocational skill or vocational requirement. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I, and I understand that, and I understand, and this is what we're, we're talking about with the fire department is a good example of when they're talking about the training, the specialized mandated training they have to have. And the pesticide license is a good one, because you go through the other services and charges and you see how many people are getting, have to have a pesticide license, which are good. I mean, that's, I'm not, I'm not advocating that we cut it. That is, that's not where I'm coming from. I'm just saying that if you have that much money, and it's, even though some of it is specialized, some of it is, like you said, customer service, I don't care what department you're in is, is good. And I'm sure that some of these other training and a lot of the other avenues go towards customer service. So wouldn't we be better off and get more bang for our dollar if we could coordinate that better? That's-
Mr. Chair?
I'm taking.
And I understand exactly what Don is talking about. As I recall, not long ago, I saw a line item in our finance committee, and there was a department that had done what I thought was terrific. They had contracted an individual to come in to do some type of awareness training for the department. And I asked a question about that, and the answer was that, you know, different departments have the option, the flexibility to do that. And that's great. Don't want to discourage that. But, you know, I'm of the same mind of thinking that there could be some economy of scale, perhaps, and some of the non-specialized type training, some of the, the type of training. I know, for example, we did some cultural competency training a year ago. So I think it was September of last year, that was done for about a hundred-plus of our staff, in management staff, those types of things. So I think that's kind of what we're talking about, is, is there an opportunity for some economy of scale, working together departmentally that can give us more bang for the buck?
As far as, as I know, there is not, and I know the, the situation that you were talking about, where the one department had a class and they invited others to come to it. It was, that doesn't happen all that often. I think they felt they had a real need to put their employees, because it was a type of supervisory training, to put their employees through it. And so they opened it up so that we, they could have everyone do that. That's not, doesn't happen very often. The rest of the, a lot of the other money, though, I have to agree with, with Ewan. It's really specialized to the department, or it's being used for the certifications that the employees in that department. So I don't believe that it would be, I don't think we'd get a better deal or break on training because we just, there aren't that, or only the employees in those specific departments need to go through it. So I'd have to say, I don't think there's that much money out there that people are using for just, you know, let's bring someone in and give ten people in our department this kind of training. I don't think that's happening. At least, if it does, it doesn't happen very often.
Don, is your question answered, or?
Well, I just wanted to throw that out. I think we, I think, you know, I got about five lists that I've gone through that are training in schools, we got money there, we got membership and dues, we have publications, and then we have travel and training. And, you know, all that, all those categories add up to about six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And I just want to be sure that we're using it as effectively and as efficiently as we can. And it, I mean, that's a, we're a big city, and when you take and divide that number by the number of employees, it really doesn't work out to be a lot-
Right.
-per employee. And I understand that. And I, the point I'm trying to make is that I think it's, training is very important. We need to do it. We have all these certifications. We have a lot of, a lot of this is unfunded mandates, which make good sense and good judgment. But on the other hand, the state and the federal government say, oh, this would be really nice. Let's just pass a law that everybody has to have this. And it's not germane to certain organizations nationwide, but we get stuck with the costs. They never give us any dollars for all this training. And I, you know, I've observed it over the last thirty-some years, that it just continues to go up. So I just bring that up. I'm not trying to cut it from anybody's budget.
One of the things I think that can happen is that Ewan and I will take a look at those funds that you're talking about and see if there is any place that we can consolidate. Because you're right.
Nancy, before you do that, let me get some clarification from the direction, and we want to go as council. We can ask them as a part of this budget process to go back and supply us with better numbers, but I'm not quite sure I'm hearing that from you. So I think that the second thing then is, new business, I'll make an administration referral, because what you're kind of talking about is more of centralized training, is a pool of money that each department then goes and works out. And so we'll do an administrative referral to give us, to tell us what they're doing with training and to look and see if that kind of thing's available.
Well, you know, I don't necessarily, I'm not asking them to give me all the classes or anything like that. I'm just, I just think it's so important that in this day of diminishing resources, that, that some of this has to cross some lines and is there, can we get-
Right. And so, exactly. So let's see what's in place on that. Either it doesn't because there's a policy in place, if not, they need to look into seeing if it's feasible to do something or make sure we're not being redundant.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting- And I'm not suggesting that we hold the budget up or...
No. So, I'll just, I'll make it a referral to administration during new business and they can just report back on those separately.
Okay.
May I ask one clarification? By the way, I agree, I like that suggestion. So, when we're talking about the 52,000 training budget here, this is just, I don't know if the right term, out of pocket expenses for classes, right? It's not the labor to attend those classes, the hour, or is it the...
No. It'll just be the trainers who we hire. Because there are, we would need to hire trainers for several of the classes we want to do.
So, the, it would be figured into the departmental budgets already if, for instance, a police officer attended some of this training, it would come out of the police budget? The hours spent in training?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's no separate budget for the number of hours.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure. Okay. Continue.
Okay. As you can see, these are our performance measures for the next year. We want to increase our, the number of employees who attend the trainings. We don't make them mandatory, but we do get good attendance. But we'd like to make it, make sure that we are getting at least 90% of the target. The recruitment process, we want it to be rated as good or excellent. And we are surveying applicants now. We want to continue to have our costs for benefits be less than the national trends. And we want to limit workers' compensation increases compared to the average prior five years. Unfortunately, I think we're above that right now. It is a target, but I'm not quite sure that we're, that it'll be less than 10%, but I'm not quite sure we're going to make it. But, that's okay. It's a target and we'll keep working on it. Service sustainability is accomplished through technology for HR. We put on NeoGov, an online application system, starting in 2010. And it has really, it's basically saved us in a lot of ways. We used to take in, you know, these thousands of applications per year, even more than I showed you. We'd take in thousands a year and then we would have to manually enter all of that data into an application system so we could generate various reports. With the new online system, we no longer enter that data. The applicant enters that data and we are able to run reports at the touch of a finger. We have also saved close to, I would say, now we must be up to about 45,000 sheets of paper. Because we no longer have employee, have applicants submit, you know, a four-page or a five-page application because a lot of times they have to do supplemental questions. We no longer have to print all of that because our managers and our recruiters, as a matter of fact, who are reviewing, you know, initial reviews to see who's qualified, who's not qualified. They don't have to print that. They do it right online. They can send the applications to the managers online. And it's really been a time saver for us. We lost three positions in the last three years. And without, I think, the introduction of NeoGov and the way we've been able to use it, we would have really been behind the barrel. But, we're, we're doing pretty good. We've also done a lot of cross-training of our HR staff. We no longer have just recruiters. We have people that deal with employee relations. They can deal with wellness. They can deal with a number of things because in the last couple of years, we've done a lot to cross-train our people. And something that's upcoming is going to be our new Halogen Performance Management System. This is a system that a lot of people refer to as just a performance evaluation system. I believe it is a lot more than that. It's going to help our managers understand what it is to really manage an individual's performance, to manage their division, and I think, you know, really move us along towards the leadership goals that we have for each and every employee. So, technology is, is great for, is great for HR. We have so many papers in our system. And we're looking to put as many of those online and so, we can just get everything done online and we're not continually filing and destroying trees. So, that's how we plan to, that's our service sustainability. And I have, are there any questions?
Questions from council? Don?
You know, it's not going to go by me. I just want to comment that we had this conversation in, in the finance committee today about workman comp claims that they're going up as our employee base ages. With that, I think one of the things that the city has been done well at is providing the opportunity for employees to exercise. Because I know, I walk and use a community center and I think that's really important. So, I want to encourage as we, as you go forward, to continue that and see how we can expand it. Because I think it saves us money in the long run. Healthy employees are a lot cheaper than...
Absolutely.
So, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Thank you, Nancy. Moving on next to the executive budget.
I'll just throw it out.
Don has his red pen ready.
Good evening, council members. I'm Priti Sridhar, the Deputy Public Affairs Administrator. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the executive budget, executive department budget. Just to make a note that there's been a slight change in the order of our presentation. The legislative department budget will be presented right at the end of all the presentations. And I'll be back to present that to you as well. So, I have here, the executive department, here's an org chart. And essentially, this department is responsible for the public defender's contract. It's a contracted position, contracted service. The mayor's office, the hearing examiner, which is also contracted, and the communications division, including cable channel 21. And in the, the section in the budget book that deals with the details of the budget are 3-7. And I know you've got, you've received the detailed budget breakdown for other services, but I wanted to use this opportunity to highlight that the public defender's contracted amount, the hearing examiner, and another fairly large item, which is a postage cost that city wears for overall mailing, is included in the other services line item under the executive department's budget. So, talking a little bit about what the executive department has accomplished and what are some of the main focus areas of the department? You know, the executive department works closely with council members, with all departments, essentially to provide strategic direction, to refine the business plan every year. This is the, you know, place that everyone comes to in terms of citizens with their questions, concerns, complaints. The executive department provides strategic leadership for the budget, again, working, you know, through the departments, with the council, and also recently, for the second time for this budget cycle, with the community and coordinating, you know, working closely with the finance department and the citizen, community budget advisory group. Another area that the executive department is involved in is regional coordination, regional partnerships, coordinating with King County, other regional agencies, and just a range of issues, policies, grant funding, you know, again, working across department needs and across different agencies and groups. And then, the executive department is also where our work, citywide work to, you know, better serve our diverse communities, work with our community liaisons is, you know, that's where it's housed. And then, of course, as communications, the communications division is within the executive department. And, you know, what I like to call strategic communications on everything, you know, issues that are important to our citizens, our priorities as a government, and, you know, whether it's budgets or our accomplishments or things that we want to, you know, promote a program, the community services program, so we get, you know, people to sign up for our classes. I just pulled some of these statistics just for you to get a flavor of, you know, sometimes communications is seen as intangible and how do you quantify it? But we actually have some good track records that I thought you would find interesting to share, if I shared. You know, we send out news releases and we use the, you know, Renton Reporter, Renton Patch, Renton Como, and as needed, the regional press to be a conduit to get our messages out. And we actually closely monitor what is it that we send out, what gets coverage? And, you know, we've been fortunate that we've had very good rapport with our community papers. And they don't have the, you know, they like the stuff we send them, let me put it nicely. So, we get a lot of coverage. So, pretty much what we send out, we make sure that it gets coverage, whether it's an event or an open house announcement or a groundbreaking that, you know, we've accomplished together. And just to give you an idea, we do about 100 press releases every year and we're already at 96 this year. So, this is another, the next number is another wonderful one. Looking at the month which gets the highest amount of web traffic in a year, that is July. July is one of our most popular months for all the events we have and everything we have going on. Last year, we had 500, actually, sorry, this year, 2012, we had 505,696 unique visitors coming to our website. So, another validation, and this surprises me every year because I always think, oh, this is, you know, we've reached the peak, but it keeps going up. Social media, I'm sorry to report, the number I have there is wrong. It's already gone up since, you know, this afternoon. So, we are at 5,831 fans for us, for our Facebook site. E-communications, a couple of years ago, we launched a Renton eAlert list serve program where people could sign up to get constant notification if we made changes to our website or any other updates. But more importantly, where we could use email lists of people who self-subscribe to send them information and newsletters. And we've been sending out several important newsletters on a regular basis, community services newsletter being one of them, where we're able to announce new classes, let them know of human services programs. And last time, when I checked on this number, you know, for the last budget cycle, it was 5,000 subscribers. It's over 10,000 right now. We do mail out our newsletter through our utility bill and through our what's happening to 45,000 residents on a month, almost on a monthly basis. And then, we've, you know, made constant improvements to channel 21 from technology upgrades, in-house video streaming in partnership with IT, and also, we keep adding programs there. So, this is just a sense of, you know, it's hard to count communications success, but there are some measures that at least we keep working on. Looking at our executive department, most of the work we do does come under the area of representative government because that is our tool for two-way communications and outreach and linkages and policy direction with our citizens. But again, I think we could fall under any category just because of the range of stuff that we do. You know, we're involved in safety issues and, you know, making our community more livable in our transportation needs. So, really, we could go anywhere, but this is the one Renton results service area that does, you know, best represent us. The other area where we actually have a very strong presence is internal support. And again, there are a couple of, you know, specific functional items within the executive department budget that, you know, that reflect that. The print shop is one. Because the work that the print shop does is really twofold. There's a lot of work that's outward, you know, publications, printed stuff that goes to the community. But there's an equal amount of stuff that is just to keep the city operations going, you know, from books and maps that, you know, the firefighters and the police department need, to court documents, to the entire mailing service. So, highlights, this is another area where we've had, like all of the other departments, significant reductions in staff. And if you actually look at it from 2008, we have seen a cumulative reduction of 40% in this small department because we've lost a total of six FTEs. The other thing that you will notice is that the public defense contract budgets have been increasing. And that's another area we're watching carefully, but some of this is coming down to, you know, what's being decided in the Supreme Court. There are service impacts of, you know, when there are reductions of this, you know, nature. I will be talking a little bit more about how we're, you know, adjusting for sustainability and to make sure that, you know, we keep going and keep doing the best that we can. But on a, you know, really simple basis, you know, there's additional time that we might need to respond, whether it's in, especially internally, if there's a department that needs, you know, some kind of communication support. We're very lean in terms of office operations at the, in the mayor's office. And, you know, some of us, key staff, Jay Forwin, myself, the mayor, and our workload impact is pretty significant because we're all wearing multiple hats at the same time. These are some of the department measures for Renton results. And there's a whole list that is part of the Renton results budget document. But as you will see, the targets we've set vary from something as, you know, easily identifiable and measurable as how long it takes us to respond to customer concerns, to looking at the bigger picture of what our residents think and our, you know, what is the value of the services we provide and how our community rates that, to, you know, our overall communications. And the last one, if you say, oh, why is it only 5%, that's actually looking at 5% increment in our success every year. So, for instance, if I said our e-communications was 10,000 subscribers, the goal is, you know, in the next budget cycle, to actually make that 10,500. So, to keep increasing by 5% or more. Service sustainability here, I just wanted to give a little picture of the impacts of some of those, you know, reductions we've had and how we've been able to, you know, innovatively address those. One of the things that we did with your direction and, you know, support is to merge the position of the Assistant CAO and the Communications Director position so that this now became a broader, a position with broader responsibility, working on both, you know, oversight of, oversight and management of communications, but also looking at some of the key issues and, you know, policy direction efforts that were formerly part of the Assistant CAO. We've worked really hard on a daily basis and on a, you know, to bring about efficiencies in the print shop. And we've actually been able to reduce citywide print by 18%. Multiple measures have gone into this from, I'd say, first and foremost prioritization that has required all the departments to kind of really work closely with it, ask that question a second time, do we need to print this or can we do this without printing? A lot of upgrades to technology, I mean, even the council now, you know, all of you have tablets and are, you know, finding ways to reduce print needs and all of that. We've done a lot of redistribution of workload among, you know, the staff, both the communications staff, our web staff, so that there is, you know, we've tried to again, make sure that as little as possible slips through the cracks because there's now, you know, a greater pool of folks who are able to kind of jump in and get stuff done. Recently, the communications staff moved to the seventh floor. And just the physical proximity of having the folks there has again, added that extra layer of contact options for the public if they walk in and therefore, you know, some ability to, you know, open the door or be around and just provide some backup. A lot of cross-training we've done of staff. And the other thing that I just thought I'd throw in here is despite, you know, that we're always looking for ways to be innovative and, you know, reduce expenses but also make revenue. And so, one of the things we did get was a contract from the Fire District 40 Commissioners to actually provide them with some additional communication support. So, we've actually... So we've actually added on some extra workload that we've done. And then, and then finally, just, uh, constant mentoring and training from, from each other, you know, from Jay, from the department head, so that, you know, we're all improving at the same time and we're all being innovative and, you know, responding as, uh, effectively as possible. That brings me to...
Questions from council?
Questions?
Um, yeah. I'm just wondering, do the costs for, um, taking out, um, space in the, in the newspaper, are they part of your budget or is that a different department?
Um, so we used to have that as a line item that we were paying for. It was a contract of about forty thousand dollars a year that we had. It was called the City Source, which was kind of this one-page newsletter that we had in the paper. Um, we actually, um, eliminated that from the budget and instead went to a more effective use of our utility bill. Now, in addition to that, there are certain, you know, times that we have to either advertise something in the paper because of, you know, uh...
Posting ordinances or public...
Posting ordinances, bid proposals. And every so often, there'll be a little extra push we'll do, say, for fireworks, et cetera. Those do come out of the department budgets.
Right.
So it's minimal.
Okay. It's minimal. Actually, where I was going with that, I, I haven't seen anything I would object to. I mean, I think it's been doing an excellent job with communication. I was actually kind of getting at, um, remember, I think it was, um, oh, maybe there was a legislative push a year or two ago to do away with having to post certain things in the newspaper, um, sort of in recognition of the fact that I think everybody that's doing analysis on the city budget or city ordinances or whatever goes straight to our website to find the information. So it seems more and more archaic to, to do public notices in the newspaper. And I was just wondering if we, what the budget is for those public notices.
Um, I don't have that, but it's in the City Clerk's office and we can definitely get it for you. I think Ewan, even will cover that, so...
And my, my only interest is to just see if we could save a little more by trying again to make that push.
That mill died a violent death.
Did it die a violent death?
Yeah. It still lurks out there, but the newspaper industry.
Yeah, no, I'm not surprised that they do and, and yet it's our, your communications specialists do such an excellent job and provide information so readily in greater detail to the citizens. Uh, we should, we should still make another push sometime.
It lurks. It's on the AWC agenda.
There's always that person who doesn't have access to the website and we shouldn't forget them. Not necessarily in this case, but, you know, that's one of the things we look at, saying, try to get the information out in as many different ways as possible so that, you know, you reach all, so...
Okay.
And so Ewan, you'll have those numbers or get those to us, okay? Any other questions? Next is Ewan then.
Thank you.
With Administrative Services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need an assistant? Do you need an assistant? No, I'm... Um, good evening. Finally, I get to take my turn to present, uh, Administrative Services Department's budget. And, um, you, you can find the department's budget starting in section three and page three twenty-three. And I'm not going to necessarily follow the budget book, uh, format and we will use the same template as all the other department has used before. Um, but overall, the Administrative Services Department has about forty FTEs and manage about seven point six million dollars in city resources. In three divisions, uh, finance is traditional, uh, budget, financial management, accounts receivable, payable, um, all those, all those kind of functionalities. And information technology actually is the largest of the three divisions and the annual budget is about four million dollars a year. And, um, they have actually only fifteen FTEs and so they have substantial amount of money in information technology is really for contractor services. And then City Clerk's Office have five FTEs, um, about one point one million dollars in annual budget. And in answering Councilmember Corman's question in terms of citywide publication, um, the, uh, City Clerk's Department actually published all the ordinances and required publication, including bids and so forth, that there, it's allowed now, we can actually do more web publication, but there's still certain required of paper publication that we have to publish in the newspaper of general circulation. And so our budget is ten thousand dollars a year for those kind of publications.
Okay.
And we really try to do whichever the law, as long as law allows us not to use printed publication, we try not to use printed publication because there are other means to communicating information. So in terms of the, the department's statistics, and I want to use this kind of topic a little bit about our services as well. Um, as you have heard in the last couple of years, uh, public records request has become an increasingly demanding aspect of City Clerk's Office. And the total numbers, as you can see on here, from two thousand eleven, we have three hundred and fourteens, and this year we estimate that we will have about three hundred eighty-eight. So it's twenty-four percent increase, but really the story is not in the number of those public records requests, but it's intensity and how broad those records requests become and how challenging in fulfilling them. Most of them require, ask for a lot of information to start with and they want them digital format. And a lot of them just require a lot of staff time to redact, review and redact and compile. And so really is additional time to compile them is really what we're really, um, pushing our resource to there. And as you recall, we did add a halftime position in two thousand twelve, um, for that purpose. And in addition to the half, halftime position, we also reallocated a resource from Police Department to fund a one limited term position for two years as a trial, um, to actually basically add a one point five FTE this year for the purpose of fulfilling those public records requests. And utility billing, customer, um, service, and there's two drivers of utility billing custom service. One is walking customer who pay the bill. We still have about twelve percent of people who pay their bill over the counter. And when we add that to people use traditional lockbox, which is about thirty-six percent, we have about half our population use pretty traditional way of paying their bills. And the other half are now using online payment, uh, on the phone payment and, and so forth. So we have about half and half right now, and we hope that we'll continue to increase online service and online payment.
Ewan, just Terry?
Are we getting any closer to being able to have online billing?
Um, it will be on my next end slide.
Okay.
On my slide.
Thank you.
And so definitely we are trying to use as much technology as possible and hopefully that we increase, uh, customer to that direction. But again, it needs to be customer user friendly before people was to use that, and that's the reason, um, we think we not find a solution in that. And the next one is our credit rating. Um, City has a very strong credit rating for both general obligation bond, which will have double A with the standard force, and our revenue bonds are rated double A plus. And we were talking earlier today that we are just going to market on Wednesday for refunding of a water source, uh, utility revenue bond for about ten million dollars in proceeds. And we're looking at almost seventeen percent savings by refunding. And so we'll generate, uh, over a hundred thousand a year, uh, hundred twenty thousand or so a year for utility systems. And, um, we also continue to expand the number of software, um, that we're supporting. One reason is we've been, um, the information technology department actually was, has been in the city for a long time, but in two thousand and seven is when we first consolidated them into internal service fund. And we try to get all the city department to, to rely on the central service department, both to avoid, um, duplication. So not one department need to have five licenses on this program and another department need the same program before another five licenses. So we try to get everything flow through the central department to see what we really need as a city. So that's, uh, one area of increase and we definitely see our, our third-party payment increase as a result as well. Now copier volume, and in here we show a slight increase to five point one six million of just click copying in all the city departments, um, per year. And at the peak of this, we actually have five point five million. So we really come down from the peak and now is, I think, more stable level. And, but we are hoping that we can continue to drive that down as we use more, uh, online or, uh, portable, um, documents. Last item is IT service desk request. We have very small, um, service desk and we have one full-time FTE plus a supervisor and an intern. Basically, the three person answer all the service desk calls. And, um, my hope is we'll continue to see our service desk calls decline over time because the fewer calls we get means the system's more stable. And so that's at least my goal, that to see this drop down consistently over time. So in terms of our, our service and by city service area, um, we have the business license. We put it under safety and health. It's just because licensing is not just money collection. It's actually trying to make sure the people who apply for business license, they are cited in the correct zoning and make sure that they don't have, or if they do have hazardous material, that they are, uh, taken care of. And, uh, so we actually manage the whole routing of the business license before they get approved. That's why it's more related to the safety and health portion. And the second largest, um, area is, or the second area is representative government, the one point one million, which basically is the City Clerk's Office, is completely in that section. And then under utility and environment, that is our utility billing section. And, uh, we have four utility billing, custom service rep, and the point nine is a cashier which manages the over-the-counter walking-in customers. And the rest, or eighty percent of the department is all in internal support, and that is the finance and IT, um, functions. And so in two thousand thirteen and fourteen's budget, we reduced two more positions in the department and brought the whole overall department reduction, position reduction to twelve or twenty-two percent. And in addition to position reduction, we also reduced our IT capital pretty substantially. And, uh, just like, um, in some other areas, we don't think that we can currently afford that and we almost halved, um, the IT capital. So from two point three million in two thousand eleven, twelve, currently is at one point two million for thirteen and fourteen combined. And majority of the one point two million is for replacement rather than new additions. And we do have an increase in costs, primarily in software licensing costs. Both the new programs we implement has higher licensing fee and as well as, uh, some enterprise license that we acquired, which will really help, um, city staff to collaborate and share files, but it does cost us a little bit more money. And lastly, but not the least, uh, item is we are, um, we need more or increase our election cost budget. We currently budget at fifty thousand dollars a year. Typically, we only have election every other year. So over two years, we have a hundred thousand to pay for one election. But given two thousand twelve, we have two special elections and we need, we should, we won't be paying for it until next year. So we will be needing to pay for the special election this year and also two thousand thirteen's general election over the really next spanium. So we basically, we, uh, need to double our election budget. And service impact, really, um, our primary concern is that we do have, uh, we will have, um, less coverage in some areas. Uh, so there could be potentially longer response time, but that's no different than any other departments. And we, we fortunately, we work with the internal, um, customer and they typically are pretty patient. And so I think the, it's really very much appreciated for their, um, patience. And one thing, um, also is that by reducing technology investment substantially, we don't know if we can meet expectations from city, other city departments when they are asking for more automation, automation, um, in the future. But I know that we'll be working as a team and prioritize them and make sure that we have everyone agreed, uh, priority to move forward.
Ewan, you're on the five-minute mark.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'm not going to go through our performance measures one by one, but you can find actually more complete list in our department budget and just like every other department have this. Uh, I do want to touch base on the fee increases. Um, we have not talked, uh, a whole lot on couple of them and that's why I want to particularly pay attention to that. We have briefed council before about business license fee increase. We currently add fifty-five dollars, uh, per FTE with fifty-five dollars minimum per license fee. And the proposed budget includes a business license fee increase to sixty-five dollars per FTE and with a minimum of one hundred and ten dollars. And the next is the path license. And the reason we have not talked about this, um, a lot is because we have said on a pass back in two thousand and ten that we try to ramp up our fee, uh, over time to catch up with King County's rate. And we are, um, going to be reaching that for at least the altered paths in two thousand thirteen, so by racing from twenty-five to thirty for altered, uh, paths. And then for the not altered, we will still be, uh, two more years before we'll catch up to King County's rate. But this is being a planned out, uh, increase, so we have not really, uh, particularly focused on this. And we also have another, um, item is also planned out and that we have not, uh, really discussed in detail, but we will be bringing this back to council. Um, that's a type, technology fee. We, when we acquired EnterGov, our new permit system, um, we implemented technology fee to recover the cost of the capital as well as ongoing support. And it was decided that we'll start at three percent during the implementation process. And once the, um, system go live, we will ramp it up to five percent because of additional licensing fee. And we have good news that this today actually is the go-live day of our new permit system. And so all the, um, permit staff in CED been working very hard as well as IT and, uh, our, our, um, EnterGov system are working together to get this set. We think we will be fully, uh, the e-plan portion will be fully implemented by the second quarter of two thousand thirteen, and that's the reason we'll bring whatever, uh, timing and actually demo back to the council in the first quarter and make sure we are ready to, and whenever we're ready to raise that technology fee before, um, we actually do that. It's not currently in fee schedule, um, so I want to just point this out. Um, now, service sustainability, uh, I will do this very quick and like every other department's, uh, automation, cost training, and also Renton Results, basically is our continuous improvement initiative. On the automation side, we are yet going to implement the e-billing. We tried to do it cheaply and going to a different way, but the customer service or user friendliness is just not there. It's too difficult to integrate another third-party, um, software on our, uh, utility billing system. So we decided to buy the bullet and go with our Springbrook Systems Provider who will, who has a e-billing solution. And we will be doing that in the first quarter of two thousand thirteen. So, and it's, it's a very good system, allow user to control a lot of their, uh, accounts as, as well as make payments. So we're very hopeful to that. And that's kind of a very quick, um... And that's kind of a very quick overview of Administrative Services Department. Any questions?
Don? Nope, Don? No, no. So...
Mr. Swisher?
Mr.?
I just wanted to say one thing for this public's notice, and that I had the opportunity to sit through the auditor's exit interview, and they gave Ewan an outstanding...
It's a whole team, actually. The audit is a citywide audit.
I understand that, but you put your heart and soul in it, so you and your team is what I should be complimenting. They just said they wished every city would come out as clean as we do.
Nice.
Okay, so, Council, I got something to run by you here, if I can find three others of you that'll support me. What we're down to is Dave Christensen's presentation on some special connection fees and our budget, the legislative budget, which should be fairly quick. With your indulgence, what I'm thinking what we'll do is, well, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda. So, prior to the public hearing, we will have Mr. Christensen give his presentation, which looks to be about four slides, and we'll do the legislative budget, so we will have completed all of the presentations prior to public hearing, and then we'll go to public hearing and take it from there. So, I will make such a motion right now. We are adjourned until seven o'clock. All right?
... about mood and feel, and it brought the community together as far as a community conver...